I will call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, August 21st, 2023, at 6:30 PM. All three Selectmen are in attendance. If you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America stands under God, indivisible, and ever-bending.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, next item is approval of minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of August 7th.
Is there a second?
I just was checking something I had caught when I was reading before, I just wanted to make sure.
You want a second?
I'll second it, yes, for discussion.
Okay, discussion, yes.
I was on page six, I just was reading it. Okay, it was fine, yep, I'm also okay.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have no correspondence for you. Brings us to my report. Mike, do you have anything from SBC?
SBC met last week and just, it was essentially a working session to discuss the draft of the final report that's underway. There was some pretty constructive discussion and the draft is continuing to be worked on.
Since it's all important, I've got a lot of unfinished work.
I don't have many updates on other projects or committees, but for ARPA, we've not had a meeting in some time, but I will give you an update on projects that are coming from Selectmen or in this case, one from DPW. So one of the projects for Public Works was to put a new generator in over there. They started that work last week. It has not been completed. Looks like they have to hook up the gas to, is that what it says, the propane, the propane to the jet. And so hopefully by the next time we meet, that will be complete. That project will put a new generator at Public Works Garage, which will replace the generator. I'm not even sure we knew the exact age of, but it would fail often. And so the power went out, someone from DPW would have to go out in the evening to reset it. And so for folks to use it, that's gas for our school buses, Public Works, and the fire departments. So it was a great use of ARPA funds. Additionally, making some more improvements to this room and the downstairs meeting room. When those are done, I anticipate meetings going back to mainly downstairs, like we used to have them. So one of the, a couple of the additions, in this room, we're going to put a ceiling mount for the owl, so we'll get all these cords off the floor. Everything will be rerouted and so there won't be any of this anymore. Downstairs, we're putting an additional monitor directly across from the meeting table, so the board, commission members are able to see it. It will be over the backs of the public. And the same thing, a ceiling mount for the camera and getting all the electrical off the floor so the unsafe cords sitting we've had will be removed. So we made all the purchases as soon as we get the quotes from the electricians to put in some of the needed outlets in the ceiling. I can get to what we'll get. We had, originally we had planned for a large renovation of this room. And then the costs of items and availability items drastically changed, so we kind of put that on hold. So we've gone to different mockups. This room is very difficult. It's used for many, many purposes. There's no direct back wall. Where else would we put monitors so the public could view and we could view? And so this room is a work in progress. We originally had $28,000. I used money to put the outlets in the floor here. We've spent thus far, Karen, what are we, about $1,500 maybe, if even?
If that.
If that, before electrical work. And that include buying a new television that we're using as a monitor for downstairs. And I anticipate the electrical will come in somewhere similar to what it was up here. Should leave us still somewhere close to $20,000. So we can determine what needs to be done further or if we want to return the funds to ARPA. So we'll see how things going, it's kind of ever-evolving. Again, we have until December of 2024 to encumber the funds, until December of 2026 to use the funds. So we're not at crunch time where we have to make quick decisions.
I don't remember the exact wording of how it was in ARPA, I remember this project, but I don't remember the exact wording. Would it be possible to adapt that project to do something similar at the Old Town Hall?
There's no Wi-Fi there.
Could that be part of it though? Could bring in, could bring a wire in and then set it up?
It could be, I think we'd have to discuss ongoing costs because then that would need internet services there. And so we can talk about what that would look like. One of the other things, and I kind of want to run it by ARPA, you all, and then ARPA and see what you think. You can feel how warm it is in here. We're down to one working air conditioner now. And I'm not sure how much is working, those in the back row, do you feel anything coming from that? Yeah. And so now we've got the fan going, we need to do something in here. Is that meeting room equipment? Not really. Really, not really. But we need to do something in this room. So whether or not ARPA finds that a good repurpose, I'm not sure. I think it might be a reach, but I would ask that board to discuss that. We couldn't spend those ARPA dollars without, otherwise ARPA is not open to new projects. So we couldn't just repurpose it without opening it up fraud, I believe. But I want to have that discussion with them because I think putting one of those wall-mounted units in and not one of these is our best bet, one of the.
The main exploit.
Yeah. And that would be probably better served in this room.
And we already have them in the vault.
In the vault, just one in the vault, that's it.
Sometimes they think that. They can do things of having one, one-headed.
Yeah.
Or two heads and one, one outlet.
Sometimes, but the vault is very, yeah, if they can go off of that without affecting the very specific requirements of the cooling in the vault, it's an option. So I'd have someone come in and give us an estimate anyway and determine if we can come up with the funds within the budget, the ARPA money maybe. We're also purchasing another air purifier, there's two in this room because of the size. We're purchasing a third one to put down in the meeting room downstairs. So there were some concerns from some, Board of Ed is going, finally moving to hybrid meetings, I'm excited about that, and they're September. So we're hoping if the electrical can be done, that their September 12th meeting, they'll begin having their meetings downstairs. So we have an electrician coming tomorrow and another one coming on Thursday to give us quotes. So I'll keep you posted, but you'll start to see some new equipment, some new things, and we'll most likely move downstairs and use this as the overflow meeting room when there was conflict. Okay. Additionally, we talked about the Public Works position, and this is the position as it was. We created a new job description, unless I have a, I can't put a different job description out there. Extended it till it's open. We currently have five applications. So if you both could get to Karen with your availability for our committee to meet, we will get you those applications so that you can take a look and remind you all that it is all confidential. Alright, and then we will set a meeting to determine where we move forward with the process. Alright, we still are in need of reporting secretaries for CIP, Capital Improvement Plan Committee, and the Board of Finance. So if you know of anyone, if anyone's interested, they can reach out to the Selectmen's office. A reminder that next Monday, the 28th, the Town Hall will be open one hour later, so from 1:30 to 7:30 PM, staff will still record their normal time for an employee luncheon. Funded by ARPA and both of you are invited to attend if you, if you're able. So 12:30 here, Town Hall. 28. I will send you the invitation in an email. Alright, and if you could also, at the same time, share your availability for a joint, a joint meeting with the Wellington Fire Department. I've asked, they've asked us for a meeting between us and the Board of Finance. I understand there was some conversation and Board of Finance on Thursday was not able to attend about whether or not they thought they should be involved at this point. I certainly think a tour of the building and then hearing where we're at is important. And then we can start having discussions as a town about what the next steps are. So if you'll let me know about that, and we'll put together a meeting. That's all I have for my updates.
Just a brief point of order, do we, who are the present to speak for?
Oh, we have no correspondence, I apologize, just skip right over to President to speak.
I was going to ask the same question.
I went right to correspondence, so we'll move to present, well, we'll backwards in time to President to speak. If there's anyone online or in the room that would like to speak, I ask you to raise your hand, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to two minutes. Anyone in the room present to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Joan Durasco, it's 15, Miss the Road, back again. I have two, two points today that I wanted to ask about. One of them is the ARPA request. We have not gotten a third estimate, and we're not going to get one. This place, this place is not going to. So we need to take one of those two that have come back, but we don't know the mechanism right now, okay? So that's, that's what we need, and ARPA has not had meetings that we know of. So I think we're limbo. We're hitting that timeline where you can only do more for so long and then it gets too cold. And that's, that's what we're worried about, is running into that timeline. So if anybody who can expedite that would be appreciated. The other thing is the youth library that's going to be going into the basement. We have to clean that basement. We have to get it cleaned out before we can do anything in it. One of the things that are there are those huge boxes of cots that evidently, from what we hear, came down from the state to the town. And that if, what I hear is correct, it is all school that is the emergency area in case of an emergency in the town. So we need to have these removed from the library and probably put, that's your decision, someplace accessible to all schools. So that, that's where we stand on that. So we're requesting that they be removed, okay?
Those, both those items are things that I can discuss with either the director at the library or your library chair, those are absolutely items that can walk through the process and we can handle.
Okay, you know, that's fine.
Just need to contact ARPA.
I just appreciate getting it going because I'm a Chair of the Building Committee and I want to get started, you know?
If you contact the Selectmen's Office, those are things that we can help you with anytime.
Sure, thank you so much.
You're welcome, no problem. Anyone else present to speak? Anyone online present to speak? Only one, so I see a raised hand. Mr. Tanaka.
Yes, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can, can you hear us?
Okay. Pete Tanaka, Mason Road. I see that the employee scheduling is on, on the agenda. I, I just had three things on that. Oh, one is the reason why the hours are the way they are now. I, I don't know if anybody's looked into why they are the way they are now, I surely don't know, but there may be a reason why they're that way, and perhaps we should check into that. The second is that there may be some unintended consequences with a four-day work week with Monday vacations. I think you'll see a lot of people take that entire week off because that'll give you a 10-day vacation with three days worth of vacation time use. So I, I think that may need to be discussed as part of the MOU. And the third thing is if this is a temporary project, I'd like to see it end with a positive vote to recontinue rather than a failure to a negative vote. I think that would probably be best. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? There will be an opportunity into the meeting if you so choose. Alright, I'll get back into order. Bringing us to Public Works. Public Works. Got a small list of things they've been working on, and I'm sure this is not comprehensive of their every job. They've been grading dirt roads that have washed out from the ever-constant rain, continuing roadside mowing, that goes on all summer long into the, you know, early spring into the fall, and sweeping roads preparing for chip ceiling. Do any of the folks in the room, what's the knowledge of when day the chip ceiling is supposed to begin? Alright, so any questions for Public Works? Alright, moving right along. Next item is an executive session. So I will move, we enter into executive session to discuss a level-two union grievance and invite Matt Carosi, Jeff Semelrock, and Jason Rinkemcze. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, the record shows at 6:46. Karen, if you have paused recording, we'll ask anyone that was not invited into the session to leave the room, we'll call you back when we are complete. If you're online, we're going to pause recording, we're going to put you all in the waiting room. You, the room in here, and then we will let you back into the room when we are complete. So go back into the waiting room and just hold tight. Alright, so what the record show, our executive session ended at 7:21. Okay, we will move on to new business. First item of new business is appointments. We, for some time, we've had some openings in Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission. An item appeared on the planning and zoning agenda to discuss what to do because we didn't have enough members to continue to actually do the work of the commission. And lo and behold, we had some folks reach out and they're interested in joining. So first, I want to thank anyone's willingness to participate in town government. And with that, I will make the motion and then we can kind of discuss it. I will move to appoint David Jordan as a regular member of the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission to fill vacancy effective 8/22/23, expiring 8/15/24.
Second.
Is there a second? Second, invite Mike. You each have a copy, did you each get a copy of Dave?
Questionnaire, yep.
Yeah, he filled out the questionnaire, he did come in and speak with me. I thought he was going to be online tonight, but I do not see him. He did come in to talk with me, we sat down and had a really nice conversation. He was willing to sit as a regular or an alternate. After speaking with him, he'd agreed to a regular position, hence the term, it expires next year, but that's the remaining time on that term. So I want to thank Dave for his willingness to serve. He has history here in the town, he served two years as the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commissions out of six years. He served on the Board of Education prior, he has background as an engineer and an engineering professor, so I have no doubt, even with the learning curve he will bring, plenty to this commission. So, any other discussion?
And it looks like he served on other boards of commissions.
Yes.
Seems very qualified.
Great, alright, see no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We had a second resident reach out to us. I will move to appoint Ralph Tulis as a regular member of the Inland, Inland Wetlands and Water Course, IWWC, Commission effective 8/22/23, expiring 8/15/2026.
Second.
Second, invite Jim. I see Ralph on and he's unmuted himself, so Ralph, the questionnaire is not required, we certainly have that available to folks to give us some insight. Ralph, anything you'd like to share with us before we make our decision?
Well, I can add a few facts about my history in town, I think most folks know that. I served 15 years on planning and zoning. I'm concerned about the consideration of merging planning and zoning with inland wetlands. I think they should be two entirely separate and independent commissions. And because of that possibility, it's, that hints some arm-twisting by some fellow residents. We decided to volunteer for this, this position.
Well, Ralph, I thank you, I don't opt to prescribe to the arm-twisting method, but it, it worked and it got some folks to come forward, so I really appreciate your willingness to serve that.
We're talking about verbal arm-twisting, not literally.
The, the discussion about merging was simply just for the Selectmen's purposes, a method by which to have a, open a discussion about what to do because without the commission, our local decisions would go to the state. And so just certainly starting to brainstorm, what else could we do, and that was one of them. But the near thought of it, you know, got people to reach out to us prior to the conversation happening in planning and zoning. So again, I'll thank you for your willingness to be considered to this. Jim or Mike?
I do share some of Ralph's concern about planning and zoning taking on something else, just in the last year or so, when we were talking about this distribution center, we flipped, we flip-flopped back and forth about planning and zoning, and it was two different aspects, that it wasn't clear they were doing both, addressing both adequately well. The zoning, yes, maybe not so much of the planning. So adding another thing on the plate, like inland wetlands and waterways, I, I think we'd gum up things more. So I, I'm glad that these two townspeople step forward to, to serve, I think that's great. I think it also shows, and maybe if we really just promote, you know, a couple vacancies here and there, that when they pop up, just remind people, there's other ways to serve in, you know, areas of the town, you don't, you don't have to be a financial whiz or anything like that, or, or even serve on a fire department, but even like something as, like this is important.
And I also like to remind folks that everybody who started on these boards had a first day, and some of that came with their knowledge and, and learning, so. Alright, see no other discussion before us, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, Mr. Tulis, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I hope that moving forward, the new board member, there's still some seats available, I think there's one regular seat and two alternate seats available in inland wetlands. Well, opportunity for this commission when they come together is to maybe do some forward thinking of how we can prevent this in the future. And, and in the event we don't have residents come forward, what other avenues we can look at besides the ones represented, so, thank you. Alright, moving on, item B is town clerk designation for preservation grant application. You each have a letter from our town clerk, Ms. Campbell, in your packet. Robin is here with us. Robin is asking once again for us to be, to consider designating her to, so that she can apply for the grant. Robin, you want to tell us a little bit about the grant and how you would like to use it? If you read.
Sure. Every year, the State Preservation Office issues grants to all the towns, all the towns are eligible to apply. There's two categories, there's like large, medium, and small. I'm not sure what the dollar amounts are, but the other two are the small categories where we fit into. The grant funding is, used to be $5,500 annually, they actually, this year have increased it to $6,000. And we have always, as far as I know, taken advantage of the grant funding and applied. This year, I am looking to continue on the cone roller shelves. If you walked into the vault, straight ahead is where our land records are, and the books lay flat on them when they roll. I wanted to house our minutes and the for the town meetings and Select meetings, et cetera, against the back wall. So I'm, I'm going to apply for three permission shelves, which will be about $6,000.
It's great, you, you may.
I move to authorize Robin Campbell, comma, Wellington Town Clerk, to be the designate for the State Historic Preservation Grant, comma, FY-2024. Period.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I'll simply share that I think Robin and I talked about how she would use these funds today and seeing the organization that has been happening in the vault since Robin became our town clerk in the fall of 2020. It's extraordinary, so using this to further clean that up and make it easier for folks to find what they're looking for and preserve it in a, I think in a better way, it's great, and a great use of state funds coming to Wellington, so. Support this effort.
I just was being clear for the record.
Those punctuation's a.
A misunderstanding of a comma can change the meaning of a whole sentence, right?
Alright, see no further discussion, I will call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ms. Campbell, go forth and get us the new shelfing. Thank you.
Come up for the meeting.
Alright, item C, new business, it's a potential land purchase. So you all have in your packets a copy of a letter that came to us from State DOT regarding a parcel on Jared Sparks Road, and the state is looking to sell. We have first right of refusal. They are asking us, within the timeframe, which I believe is 45 days, to indicate whether or not we are interested or not interested. So tonight, any action we take is not purchasing the land, simply if we want to pursue the pursuit, the purchase of this parcel. This is 9,205 square foot parcel that was the radio tower, state radio tower. There is a building, some wooden steps in the tower. So there is no conservation land directly connected to this parcel. So, you know, we can, we have 45 days, so we don't have to make a decision tonight. The letter came August 14th. We can talk about it at our next meeting if there's, you know, more investigation like us to do. I'm always wary of taking ownership of additional buildings.
So I have some history with this property.
Excellent, bring it forward.
I.
Before I do that, Mike, I'm sorry, for background, especially for the public, the, they're asking $4,000 for this piece of property.
Even better. I don't remember exactly how many years ago, but during the time when Christina was first selectman, with the fire department's encouragement, I pursued the state about that piece of property because the DOT had at that time moved off of that radio system, and we're not using that tower anymore. That radio tower became surplus, and they were starting to surplus those properties in other towns. And I went through an incredibly arduous process at DOT to find the right person and get the right information, and that person retired, I started over again. We finally got the right information, DOT offered it to us as a transfer for $0. But at the time, what, the one thing that was remaining was the Board of Selectmen had to agree to it. And there was not interest at the time with the Board of Selectmen to agree to it. So the project died. So it was offered to Wellington for free, ten-ish or a little more years ago. I'm not saying that was a bad decision at all, I'm just saying that was the decision at the time, and part of the reason for that decision was logical thinking, and that was the tower wasn't in poor condition. And so the town would be taking on the liability for a rusting steel tower. It's not super tall, but it's up there, and would then have the cost of taking the tower down because most radio vendors would not climb it and put an antenna on it. The idea at the time was the school was not able to communicate between center and hall, I believe Dave Harding was the superintendent at the time. They wanted to bounce the radio signals off of that tower between the two schools. Fire departments were potentially interested in it before the availability of the 800 system that we're now going to. So a lot of things were different technologically at the time, they had potential value, but the town didn't want to take on the liability of the steel tower. The building is not much bigger than a doghouse, so that. The building is not much bigger than a doghouse, so that's really not a big issue. The tower is the bigger issue because if it falls, it can reach onto any of the adjoining parcels of property because this is less than a quarter of an acre. And if it falls this way, it's the power lines on Jared Sparks Road. So I don't know, you know, maybe a conversation with Alex or Tyler about the county needs. I don't know the tower location has any value for emergency services anymore. It probably doesn't for public works anymore because they're on the eight hundred now. So I guess that should be part of our decision. It doesn't have any value to us.
Yeah.
Because it's going to have liability as soon as we.
Right. Then that was my first concern, right, is the liability. Now, I didn't know how, I haven't been up there, so I don't know how big the building was, but the tower is what concerned me.
Yeah.
That I knew it just couldn't be.
It's not super tall, but it's rusting at the bottom.
And so what could we use this for? And so from my perspective, to make a a decision on this, again, we're not adding to conservation lands in any way. We'd be using this. Is it a means of a revenue source? And if not, what does it bring to us besides liability? Now, I'd say we can't move forward with it, but I want us to have a discussion. We can do some more research and and find out some more answers and get some more input. But I wanted to bring this to us right away so we could start the process as a board. If any of you had something to offer, and I assume that the firefighter and all of us might have some information to offer.
I probably still have the letters back and forth between DOT and everybody else.
Yeah. And it's, those are things that when I, when you know when it happens are easy to to get to, and Robin's very organized vault. But not knowing if this had ever come up again. It is interesting that the inflation, you didn't take it the first time price has gone up four thousand dollars.
Well, and this person probably has no idea that we read this conversation before because two people in between could have retired.
So the question is, could this change to to nothing? But again, what is the value in the potential future use to the town?
Right.
Minus the liability or version liability.
I think we should give it some thought, but I don't think we need to jump right on it either.
No. And again, I'll, you know, we'll use all of that forty five days.
And I don't feel like overwhelming urge of like, you know, like maybe we need it, but I mean, it's not a.
You know, in the previous conversation, there was a lot more potential because of the schools, because of the fire.
I remember that.
There was a.
There was a need that it that it could have satisfied. And I think if the tower had been in better conditions, I think the board of selectmen would have been interested in entertaining it. Because then we could solve those needs without having to take that tower down and put it away.
I think I think it came up on the Board of Finance at work because I remember us talking about it.
That maybe, yeah. It had to be ten or fifteen years ago.
It was, yeah.
All right. So we'll search for some of that documentation. I'll start to have the conversations, reach out to them. Do you want to take the lead on talking to the fire department, see if they have anything?
I.
Input and offering, and then we will reconvene in our next meeting to to discuss this further.
Yeah, I'll I'll check with the two chiefs as well as Tyler because of his understanding of the regional needs.
All right. And so we will move forward with that. Go forward.
Go forward. And I'm not even sure if that parcel was big enough to say, you're like, well, maybe there's a other telecommunications needs, like.
It was so small, less than a quarter of an acre. Yeah.
Yeah.
Even if it was for a commercial purpose, they needed more acreage or something.
I think they did.
Yeah, I don't know how it works with the sighting, but it's a it's a post-exemplary piece. It's literally, it's like the size of this room.
I I remember looking at it just driving down Jared. It's it's not, it doesn't look like it's an easy parcel to get at.
Well, and not just the building and the tower you take liability, but the steps. So as soon as someone walks onto those steps to get curious about this down public piece of property.
The access, the vehicle access to it goes in John Peters old driveway and was by agreement. I'm not sure if it's even written on the land records for John Peters property, which has been sold now to somebody else. That was how you, that was how the state opted to service it. They would drive up John Peters driveway and there's a dirt road through the woods.
So we don't, we don't.
It comes in this way.
And and that's so it's an alimony trust with the family. So.
Oh, well.
And, yeah, Daryl, William Peters alimony trust.
You don't even know if there's a a a lien, a right of way or something.
I don't know. That would be easy for us to find out.
That's easy, right? Once we know the property, that's easy. It's the conversation that went back and knowing when that happens. So we'll, we'll look forward into that and then have further conversations at our next meeting.
I'll check with the assessor records after there's a right of way. Just for conversation.
Thank you.
Because you'll probably need that just to take the tower down.
Yeah.
Or something. Because doing the crane work from the road would be difficult because the power lines are on that side.
I mean, we'd have to access it somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Moving on to item D, tax refunds. I'm going to start with a couple that just came into us, so you don't have these three. So I'll make the motions and that we can discuss and share them with you. So you did ask for, we we had in the past received why things hadn't happened. I spoke with our tax collector and asked her to go back to including in those. So trying to save us paper was a great valiant effort, but we want to know why we're. I've seen them, but you you don't want to. So I will move to refund Amy E. Hall a certificate of correction in the amount of one hundred, I'm sorry, in the amount of one hundred sixty dollars and fifty seven cents.
Second.
Second discussion, I will share with you that this is now a car that's registered on the state, so they won't. These three that I'm going to read, you don't have in your mind. They came in after Karen sent her packet. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I move to refund Luis E. Sotomayor a certificate of correction in the amount of fifteen dollars and sixty four cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Again, this vehicle was sold. This was a vehicle that was sold. So no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Apologize, there are four. I move to refund Luis E. Sotomayor a certificate of correction in the amount of sixteen dollars and eight cents. Seconded on Mike. Again, this was another vehicle that was. We're clipped together. I'm I'm pausing because these were all clipped together in one, and I took them apart, but they're the same.
It could be like the same.
They're the same vehicle.
Oh, it's the same vehicle.
It's the same vehicle. We can see if they had different tax numbers, like they could have been from two different tax. Here's twenty twenty one, this has been twenty twenty two. Yes, that's right. So there are two different tax bills on the same vehicle. So again, that was, I don't know if I read the full motion, did I, Karen?
Yes.
And it was seconded. Okay. So it was fifteen dollars and sixty four cents for a vehicle that was sold.
I think Mike seconded it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I move to refund Sue Jansen a certificate of correction in the amount of forty eight dollars and twenty four cents. And this was a condition assess adjustment for the vehicle. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can you do a copy of all of these? I move to refund CCA P Auto Lease LTV a certificate of correction for five hundred fifty four dollars and fifty one cents. Second.
Sorry.
Second in my mind, any discussion? Who's disposed? I stare about the lease and been disposed of in January. We see the.
So when the tax bill went from being a responsibility of the lease company to a responsibility of the person who owned the car? Yeah, okay.
Hey, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I move to refund Carol Schofield an overpayment in the amount of six dollars and sixty nine cents. Seconded by Jim, any discussion? She simply paid too much, and so she is on negative balance. Some people choose to carry it over, some people don't. Yep. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And move to refund William E. Miller an overpayment in the amount of four hundred twenty nine dollars and ninety eight cents. This thing I might do. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to refund Nicole D. and Brady Tully a certificate of correction in the amount of two hundred sixty two dollars and forty nine cents.
Second.
Seconded by Mike, any discussion?
I know why there is.
All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? This point you should move on to Wellington. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I move to refund Caitlin E. Campbell a certificate of correction in the amount of one hundred eleven dollars and twenty six cents. Seconded by Jim, any discussion? This car was a lot, total loss vehicle. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. I move to refund Keith R. Palmer Senior and Lynn L. Palmer a certificate of correction in the amount of ten dollars and fifty eight cents. Second. Sorry. With my mic, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. I move to refund Eugene S. Spack a certificate of correction in the amount of one hundred thirty dollars and forty eight cents. Seconded by Jim. I said one thirty forty eight. Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And lastly, I move to refund John F. Gerhart Junior and Cheryl A. Gerhart a certificate of correction in the amount of one hundred two dollars and seventy five cents. Second. Seconded by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, you know, oftentimes you're seeing the sheet that has the reasoning the assessor's office has. They have to get certain information.
Right.
In order to get that. So behind this would be the.
Understood.
Okay. Next item, Human Services Director Job Description. We talked about how I had every intention after last meeting to host the position. Well, I pulled up the job description, a couple of things. One, not thrilled with it. Second, the position has changed since it was last filled. It used to be the Director of Youth and Family Services. Before my time, that department was renamed Human Services and became the Human Services Director. So what I didn't want to do was put out a job description that this board had not approved. The essential job duties are the same. I reworked it, so it looks a little bit more in line with some of the other descriptions we have worked, reworked, and presented it as such. Don't do that. I'm looking at the wrong. So what you have as a draft of it, it took what was a really old, very simple, not real. Very simplistic. For reference, this was quiet.
What's this one?
This was how it insisted.
Oh. Well, like this this one doesn't look too bad.
Yeah.
That was pretty decent.
This is what was there, so I took a lot of the same context and reworded.
Yeah.
And used a format that we started using on our job.
Right. So the only thing that caught my eye, and I wonder if it needs to be in here or not, is that there seems to have been some value to this person having worked from time to time in one location or another, or one day a week in one location. Should be included in the job description. Part of the environment is you may that you're not, you may not always report to work at the same place for the rest of the job. You may, from time to time, need to be recording to work at other locations within the town to serve a particular population.
I I would think that would go under other related work, knowing that we have other buildings, and that we can add into to maybe the jobs, not the job description, but some of the describers that we put out when they posted online advertising. Thank you.
Sure, the advertising. Yeah.
As the words is.
Well, it sounds like they're going to go to the exact other end.
No, I mean, sometimes they got to go two doors down and be at the senior center and.
Probably or maybe at law school or, yeah.
At summer camp, but but, you know, summer running coordinating at summer camp with the rec department, you know, speaks to that without the specific, you say they're going to leave this whole thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
It does say coordinate events to include for distributions and whatnot, so. Right.
Yeah.
So if you folks are in favor of this, I would entertain a motion to approve and moving forward and post.
I will approve the Human Services Director Position Description as presented in draft.
Is there a second? Seconded by Jim, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. 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 Motion carries. All right, we will get this, and maybe at some point in the future. So that's how we post jobs. That's a policy change, and we might see that happen for you soon. All right. Moving on to the Everbridge Notification System. So I, you each have a draft mass notification policy in your packet. We went out to some of our neighbors and did not recreate the wheel and drafted a policy that I think speaks to our needs. What you see in yellow are things that I think we need to look at as to whether or not we want to include them, we want to tweak them, take them out. They also, this this particular policy was used off of the Talon Talons policy. And so it speaks to some forms that they use in in communicating and how the message gets from the person who wants to put it out to the person who puts it out. And so I have asked for some of those forms to take a look at so we could review whether or not we want them. But basically, this is a lot like what we talked about. It's for emergency like purposes, but not those that would go through that Level One Connecticut Alert CT nine one one service. It also shares the policy of TN. And that is Appendix A, so that's Talon County Mutual Aid Fire Service and their mess.
For those who don't know that term, either that is our local nine one one.
That's correct. And so that that is where we would go to do a reverse nine one one. We would be working in conjunction with state police or the the proper authorities. If it was a state police matter, we'd have to work with them. TN could not put out a reverse nine one one through their system without that authorization and some time verbiage from them. We learned that in the past year. So, yeah, it references that so that we are aware. I like a lot of what's in here. It's very simple. We're not going to be using this to say that you know, we have some extra donuts in the back of the town office building that are left over. It is, that is a ridiculous example, but it will be used to say X Road is closed, you know, for the next twenty four to forty eight hours due to massive you know, trees downtrotting, you know, the road has been washed out, the transfer station is closed, we we close the all town offices due to impending snowstorm, things of that nature and that level. And so what you see a lot in the yellow is who's making those final decisions. Talon has a much larger infrastructure system than we do. Their fire department is a town, is it Talon? They're all met, they're they're all encompassing. We work with our fire cert, fire departments to make these decisions in coordination with. But typically, that decision making is that of the first selection and the and or the emergency management director working together. So do we think we need a committee? And in this case, that committee really does like a review of the after action. Okay, this is what we use. Do we think that's proper usage? And I'm not sure how often they meet and do that. And I'm not sure how often they meet and do that. So if you folks want to take this, take a look at it. Any questions you have, any alterations, if you see something you don't need in the last page under privacy policy, you'll notice I highlighted pager numbers. Is that still something cute?
I think probably a little bit.
Okay. So there's some simplistic questions, and then there's a little bit more complex in a process. And so we really only mocked up the, the mass notification policy, the appendix. I did not change that as nearly sharing the policy moved forward. And I will share with you, Karen, send out to you the other, the you see, they have an administrative broadcast request form that they reference as well as another policy, and I did ask.
Yeah, employee broadcast.
Yeah, employee, right, right, and whether or not we want to give that, that level of decision making that would have to come forward. So again, we have a much smaller infrastructure here, it may not be necessary, but can't hurt to put in. So if you'll take a look at that at our next meeting, I'd like to be able to make some progress on this draft. Additionally, Karen, do you have the copies? Karen is working on what our website will look like to get people to opt in and detailed instructions. So our goal is to send out a postcard to begin, get into every mailbox that will send you back to the town website so that you can sign in. I have them, I thought I brought them with me. Yeah. You can't miss them. So what, what will happen is we'll send something out, we'll have a QR code or the exact email, I'm sorry, website address. You'll go to that area and it will be detailed.
Right.
Follow this step, click here to do it, and here is what each part, each step will look like and what you need to fill in. We've gotten some pricing, we're working on that. It's probably going to cost us somewhere in the $700 to $800 to get a postcard out to everyone. It's my job to find out where that money will come from, the postage from our postage line, the rest of it, where that will come from, but I can't think of money better spent.
Right.
In that draft policy, the one question I have, and I'm waiting for the answer on, is where it talks about us getting a master list. Everbridge will provide the town of Wellington with a master phone number database. I remember being specifically told that we would not start with any of it. They would not be sharing that information with us. So I don't know if that's changed since Talon began using theirs, or if that's new language, I'm not sure. So, you know, we're looking at just some content. Information that will be on there.
If I remember this right, this is an old conversation. I think the clarity on this is we would not necessarily be getting it for administrative use, but because we signed a contract with Everbridge, they would convey from the CT alert list, I believe, to whoever is our, in this case, TN, this base of data to infiltrate or to populate.
Which I'm not sure because.
Which has already been done.
Yeah, I had gone, like I went to TN.
Yeah.
With a neighboring town, we went to say, show us how this would work, if we can, how your Everbridge works. We sat down with them, and they have the Wellington list populated. They have every town.
Yes, it's already done.
I remember them sharing with us, and then the Everbridge people initially saying, you're not going to get that, that's for something different. So even if we do get that master list, it would not be used for our Wellington notices.
No, that's to populate the emergency.
Correct.
Right, and that is, and Kevin told me that, was in there already.
I remember you saying that, and I thought I was confused.
So if you already found it set up on the state level, then it would pre. You automatically would get included on that, that emergency level within Wellington.
If we went out to like the reverse 911 from Wellington, they would use ours with that data. But if you want the Wellington notices, the roads closed, you have to opt in, so that's a separate, there's a separate database. And then we would create an employee, which we already have, and we utilized, an employee database. And we've tested it, so it's been used to send out a message to town employees. Town hall is closed today due to inclement weather. So we have, we've been able to test with that, and Karen hasn't actually sent a message out, so we're going to have her test on the employee side to try to utilize that. And we'll do that for Monday, because they were closing at 12:30.
Yeah.
So these are just some simple mockups at a very early stages of what we'll put on a postcard, whether it be this much. We're looking at the same size the school building committee sent out. Believe it or not, it was cheaper than a nice glossy small postcard by about half. So putting out some information onto there, we really want to get their attention to sign up for these alerts. And then again, every time we get numbers of people in a space, get them to sign up. So if we can have this all in place, don't be surprised if you see me out in the corner on election day. That's the next large gathering here at the town office building to say, you're here, come on over and sign up for this. So I might even bring a laptop out, what can do right there. So we're working on this. You can take a look at the draft policy. Please send some comments back to Karen so that we can make some adjustments and show you what that looks like in the next, at our next meeting, and we hope, we hope today to have the postcard to you. But it just hasn't happened yet, so, but we can make great progress, and I think Karen's all her work on this. This is her, this is her pet project, and she's having fun with it.
I did have some training over the weekend too, so.
Okay.
I'm anxious to put it into use and see if I can make it happen, so.
And right now, so the easiest way to do that is with the staff directory, and we'll make some updates to that, so. Thank you once again to Karen for that. All right, any comments, questions on that process, anything else you want to see us working on, or you'd like to take on? Okay.
I've taken some notes off.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, a lot of this is in your real house. So any questions? Again, I didn't create the wheel, I simply borrowed it. All right, a four-day work week pilot. You know, we moved to begin September 1st as I start to work on the MOU, working with our town attorney to put some things in writing and begin working with the union. And then looking at the calendar, Labor Day is Monday, September 4th. I do not think it's a good idea to begin a four-day work week pilot that we're doing for six months that is simply a pilot.
On a seven-day.
But I didn't turn it into a three-day week.
Right.
So take an already big change, not just for residents, but for our staff, and make it a three-day week. And so I, and, and in light of the progress we're at, I'm suggesting that we start on Monday, September 18th. If you're open and agreeable with that.
It's reasonable.
Yeah, it was daunting, and I may not be the most popular boss at the end of the night. For those who are eager to move forward and get started, but I don't want, I want to set us up for success.
Let's do it right.
And I want to set them up for success, so do it right now, so we will look to begin, I will send a communication out to our staff, and we'll begin publicizing that.
We had set.
We had set a starting.
Did you use a motion by this board to send the start date?
So I will move that we postpone the start of the four-week, I'm sorry, four-day work week pilot from September 1st to September 18th.
Sorry.
Seconded by Mike, discussion. Seeing September 18th is our drop date. All right, thank you.
Would like to take a vote?
Oh, yeah, all those in favor?
I'll vote for it. Aye.
Aye, I apologize. For those who are online or watching this later, it is hot in here. And you could probably understand if you were here. All right, that brings us to present to speak. Anyone in the room want to speak? Don't all raise your hand. No, okay, anyone online, present to speak?
I'd like to introduce myself, may I do that?
You may, I ask you to state your name for the record and.
Stuart Fisher, 65 Alas Road, Wellington. I am the Democratic nominee for first election, I wanted to introduce myself and say good evening to you all.
Thank you.
I'll be seeing you down the road.
Yeah. All right, anyone else online? I see a hand raised. Yes, you may identify yourself for the record and limit your comments to two minutes, please.
Nicole Snyder, Wellington Hill Road. I just wanted to touch down on the four-day work week and just share my opinion. I'll keep it short and sweet. It was brought up before with the current hours. In my opinion, it's just the, the current hours that we have are not favorable to many households of today. With two working parents and closing by 2 o'clock just doesn't work for many households. When it once did, you know, we had a person who ran the household, and we had a person who was the breadwinner, so it was more doable, in my opinion. Many surrounding towns have found four-day work weeks favorable and successful. And we picked Friday was brought up because it's simply our lighter day. And I'll say it again, I think you'll find the majority of our public pleased with friendlier hours and just being more accommodating. And, and as far as an employee standpoint, I'm not going to lie, it's an attractive option for new staff that comes on board. And I feel that there'd be less staff turnover, which would be really nice. And I also feel that it would be better customer service opportunity for us to have with our public. There's no doubt about it, there's going to be quirks to work out, just like there is in every brand new thing. Adjustments would be made, but again, how are other towns finding it so successful with their public and their employees? So just my opinion, and as far as putting off the start date, I respect your decision, all three of you. So there's no worry on the employee. You're still, you're still favorable. That's right.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else present to speak? All right, it's been quite a bunch. All right, I will move on to Good and Welfare. In two weeks, you'll get an opportunity to talk to us once again. I want to start by, once again, thanking Dave Jordan and Ralto List for their willingness to serve on Board of Commission. We will be sure to post any openings, the town clerk worked on that, and if anyone is willing to serve, has a need, we're happy to hear from you. So thank you to them for stepping up. Mobile food chair will be back at the town office building next Wednesday, August 30th, from 11:00 to 11:30. This will now be a walk-up model for the next time they come. Truck will be parked, residents are reminded to bring reusable bags, and will need to park and approach the food chair truck. As a reminder, it is open to all Wellington residents as well as residents from other towns, communities in Connecticut. Please continue to support our small businesses and restaurants if you can. Monday, the 28th, the town office building will have a delayed opening, and we will be open to the public from 1:30 to 7:00. September 30th is the annual car show on the Green, and so look for information regarding that. I'm pulling up the calendar, I apologize, because I didn't write down the date of the flea market. The annual flea market on the Green will be Saturday, September 9th. So we look forward to those two events. Another Good and Welfare is the transfer station. We've been approved for our municipal transfer station general permit for another 10 years. So we are now up to date until May 10th, 2033. So, all right. Seeing no other business before us, I would make a motion to adjourn at 8:00 PM.
Sorry.
This is that cap, this is a non-debatable matter, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you all, have a good night.